Roll call.
Council Biden.
Present.
Present Council Cahill. Present. Present Council Capano.
Present.
Present Council Calucci.
Present.
Present Council Creighton.
Present.
Present Council Asier.
Present.
Present Council Ford. Present Council Lozey.
Yes.
Present Council Net.
Yes.
Present Council Phelan.
Yes.
Present Council Trahan.
Present.
Present, eleven, present.
We'll pause for a moment, silence. Right, please.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to accept the minutes of March 27th and April 10th.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion.
We have no communications and we have one public hearing. Petition of Fiesta shows are geneed for permission for accountable fundraiser for 4th of July fireworks on May 9th through 13th to set up Mesa with the Lynn Tech Field.
Open for public hearing for anyone who would like to speak in favor. Anybody in favor? One more time. Close those, close the hearing for all those in favor. Opening for anybody in opposition. Anybody in opposition? Close the public hearing. Anyone in the council? Councilor Capano?
Motion to grant.
Anybody second? Discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. We have no public hearings to be sat down. Unfinished business from the Public Property Committee meeting.
Councilor Sherri, our motion is suspend the rules.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table, uh, suspend the rules, uh, removed from the table petition of National Grid. Decred public highways are running and maintained on the ground, condos located on Broad. Lewis motion, new motion. Gallow Exchange, Silvie Street, East Manhattan.
Do I hear a second to suspend the rule?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Councilor Sir.
Uh, thank you. We've already had a public hearing and, uh, two months of negotiations with National Grid, our fellow counselors. Both, uh, a lot of public National Grids, uh, City Hall and the, uh, EPW have come to an agreement and, uh, I'd like to make a motion approve with the following stipulations and I'm going to read those stipulations into the minutes of the meeting. I couldn't talk into here. Uh, that's right, um, after inspection of the public way of Ride Street and Blue Street with EPW and Sullivan, uh, others representing the city, um, we come to the conclusion that the following special conditions shall apply. Two-way traffic must be maintained at all times. Times mainway closures will be limited to five minutes maximum. Working hours will be limited Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. in the morning until 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. That's only from East Manhattan to Chestnut Street and it's only during the school year. You can work from 7:00 a.m. in the morning until, uh, 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon at a little basis or on that move. A biased police fire of the city council will be notified monthly of the progress and detailed schedule of the next month's anticipated work. Uh, verbal message boards will be placed at each end of the project detailing the locations of the work. Exact location shall be approved by the Commissioner of Public Works. No equipment or materials shall be stored or left overnight in any public freeway prior to the start of the project. A staging area large enough for all equipment and materials will be identified. No work will be permitted between July 3rd and July 8th during that week of the, uh, local July activities that take place in the city. Work between Jerry Street and Jarrett Street will only be permitted during the school summer recess as I stated from, uh, June 20th until September 1st, uh, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. till 4 o'clock. That's a public safety issue because of the schools in that area. No use, uh, stretch it or, uh, uh, so the mediums. Our islands will be permitted without express approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. Four inches minimum of asphalt will be used to patch the trench. Trenches don't get to match existing thicknesses of asphalt. Finings shall be placed in lifts of no more than two inches and top no more than two and a, two, two and a half inches above what the roadway is. The separate patch will be leveled with the roadway and school. Any settlement, uh, or displacement will be ratified immediately. The final restoration will include grinding one and one-half inches of asphalt. Curve to curb in areas where the work significantly affects the entire roadway. Sprint Street to Cowell Street, New Ocean Street from Ocean Street to East Manhattan. East Manhattan from New Ocean Street to the city limits. And that's from curb to curb in those locations. Um, the entire intersection of Broad Street, Silvie Street to New Wall Street, East Manhattan, New Ocean Street will be curb to curb. Um, the rest of the job will be from centerline to curb except where the work is going down the middle of the roadway. The final paving shall be performed in the spring of 2013 and shall be completed by June 30th of 2013. A paving will be performed under supervision of the Department of Public Works and include the adjustment of any old gas things to replace them, loop detectors and replacement of all paving markers. All sidewalks will be cut at the seams and replaced with concrete. While curbing removed, a misalign during work must be removed and re-set, replaced the same distance of the cut in the sidewalk. Any sidewalks requiring replacement will be subject to the ADA requirements including the installation of any cap ramps as well as the joining ponds. No contractions, not be allowed overnight. Temporary pads will be installed at the end of each working day and shall be maintained by the applicant. Including all openings in the street and sidewalks. Plates will be permitted subject to the approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. Contractor will be responsible for dust control and may be, may be required to sweep the area. And I'm going to ask them that they do a wet sweep rather than a dry sweep, uh, when they do that to keep the dust down. Contractor will be responsible for documenting the existing conditions of the area and any damage to and not limited to sidewalks, curbs, streets, trees, grass. Rapidly signs etc. will be repaired or replaced with the steps action of the Commissioner of Public Works. I'm also going to ask the National Grid, uh, put up $500,000 of loan, um, for three years to cover any work that may have to come down. With all that being said, the motion will be.
Anyone to second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
No.
No, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Unfinished business from the Public Property Committee meeting of April 10th. Audit that the City of Lynn accepted deed for the property located in 38 Rockaway Street from the Bank of New York and our Bank of America provided that prior to the transfer Ms. Wendy Joseph and Mr. Stefan Wench execute an agreement with the City of Lynn with terms approved by the City Solicitor's Office.
Councilor Calucci?
The unanimous vote for motion to approve.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Finance Committee meeting of April 10th. Audit that the city control will be initiated by authorized to make the following appropriation transfer from the reserve fund to the account of unpaid bills in prior years, $3,708.
Council Calucci?
This is the unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Committee reports, license committee. Council Trhan.
Of the committee, motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ways and Means Committee, we have one with an emergency request, an act authorizing the City of Lynn to provide certain accidental disability retirement medical benefits to Gregory Lang.
Council Trhan. Anybody second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Biden. Epstein, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, non-emergency.
Roll call.
Council Biden, Epstein, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Uh, Finance Committee report, um, we have three council orders that they request on emergencies, I'll read them together. Audit that the city controllers hereby authorized to make the following transfers from the account of excess workers' compensation to the account of workers' compensation benefits, $300,000. From the account of excess workers' compensation to the account of workers' compensation insurance premiums, $20,000. And from the account of reserve fund to the account of fire department overtime, $50,000.
Council Calucci?
This was the unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Non-emergency?
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Any unfinished? Councilor Cahill?
I would refer to Councilor Sherri.
Come.
If you can agree for the, for the.
Councilor Sir?
I think that's possible. You know, hey, you. After talking with all the counselors, uh, Ford, Lozey, and Biden and some of the other guys, um, they're having a public hearing in front of the school committee on Thursday night in regards to whether or not we should play Kathy Lay from the doctor, Kathy Lay from Chavo, uh, she's a superintendent. And, uh, I mean, I wholeheartedly support her, I find it, my other fellow counselors do too. I'm not trying to, uh, you know, change whatever opinion people have about, but, uh, I'd like to make a motion. We sent a letter of support from, uh, the Lynn City Council in regards to, uh, Dr. Leachum's, uh, performance, her job abilities, um, I mean, she's, I think she does an unbelievable job. And, uh, I think she's going to continue to do a job, a great job. So I give a motion, I'm sending a letter, showing the support.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Count.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Asier.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Council Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Reiterate, Mr. President, to the members, I'd like to thank Council Asier for his brevity as well. I promised to be as fast as them, but that's going to be, I could, I apologize for bringing this forward today, not knowing it was a super difficult day, oh, well. Uh, we're here to announce kind of a new exciting program in the City of Lynn. Uh, it's called municipal aggregation, most people don't know what that is, but what we're here to say, there are plain terms, a way for the City of Lynn to leverage the amount of rate payers we have in the City of Lynn to reduce your energy costs, which at this point is, uh, I think is a cliff in the city. It's going to affect basic rate residential homeowners as well as small businesses. And we have some representatives from NextEra who are partnering the City of Lynn, here to discuss that with us today. We're also very excited, and this is outside the realm of the City of Lynn, to also include our partners in Swanson. We have Town Stock and Richmond and Rifa here as well to speak, uh, about what's happening, uh, in terms of the same program in conjunction with the City of Lynn in City of Swanson, because the President asked that selectmen and members be able to approach and make a statement about Swanson's involvement in this program.
Is that a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, a motion to suspend the rules.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Senator Mr. Malzirfer is actually a 19A graduate of Lynn High School, I think he, I'll support that motion.
Oh, thanks, yeah. Thanks for having me, it's great to be here again, I am actually from, I went to high school with, to the 13th class of 1980. I am a selectman of Swanson and Vice Chairman right now and, um, I'm real excited about partnering with Lynn on this. Um, it will help the town of Swanson, we have 5,500 households and small businesses to offer to improve, to lower the cost even, even down lower. Like I say, I really appreciate you having me here today, uh, we are going to be voting on this on the 7th of, of May with our town meeting. You should not have a problem getting that through the selectmen unanimously voted for this. And we have, uh, NextEra leading us at our town meeting to go over the program with the residents at our town meeting. So once again, thanks for having me, really excited about the program and I look forward to coming here again sometime and working with Lynn to increase our services and lowering costs shortly between the two communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just further ahead, I'd ask that, uh, podcasters from NextEra approach the podium and give a very quick presentation. Is that what we're going to do here in the City of Lynn and Town of Swanson?
Thank you, Council Cahill. Uh, I have a presentation that I hand out. I'm going to be as brief as possible, I'm going to go over this presentation very quickly. Uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and get as detailed, uh, as the counselors need me to get uh, to, to make sure you have a clear understanding as to what we're trying to do. By the way, I was a, uh, participation in, uh, Government Day as well, Student Government Day, uh, many, many years ago. So I thought it would kind of full circle, uh, made now.
Classic, right?
Well, I'll do English.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd just like to add that, um, Mr. Councilman, I also graduated English in 1978, so.
I'm a little tech专业的.
I'm going to go through this very quickly, uh, starting on page three. Uh, so I explained briefly who NextEra Energy is. Uh, we're a very large electric generation and distribution company. Uh, we have, there's two parts to our company. Uh, one is a regulated company that delivers electricity, uh, down in Florida. Uh, we're a large electric distribution company in Florida. Uh, in addition to that, when the electric market is regulated, uh, back in the 1990s, we started an unregulated company called NextEra Energy Resources that owns and operates, uh, electric generation in 22 states and Canada. Uh, to give you an idea of the size of our company in a megawatts, uh, perspective, the New England Power Pool has about 26,000 megawatts, uh, to serve all of New England, that's electric generation. We have 16,000, so about two-thirds the size of the New England Power Pool. Uh, we're a very good credit-related company, um, strong financially and, uh, very serious about trying to do something, uh, with the City of Lynn and Swan, in the town of Swanson. On page four, uh, to give you an idea, we're the largest, uh, operator of wind-generated facilities in the country. We have 8,600 megawatts of wind generation in the United States and Canada, uh, with the largest generator of solar power in the world. Uh, and we're in, in New England with a, a very large hydroelectric generator, we have generation facilities up in Maine. Uh, we also own, uh, most of the Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant and we own, uh, half of a natural gas fuel power plant in Bellican, Massachusetts. But as you can see, more than 95% of our electricity is generated in clean or renewable resources. Uh, it says on page five, you know, what is municipal aggregation? In 1997, the state of Massachusetts deregulated its energy markets and as part of that deregulation, it allowed, uh, cities and towns to vote to, to enter into an agreement with an electric supply provider to provide energy, uh, for all the residents and businesses in the city of, in the, in the particular city, in this case Lynn, uh, that don't already have a third-party agreement with somebody else. Uh, the good thing about this law, I think from a risk perspective, is that, uh, people can opt out anytime. So if they don't like, uh, what we're doing, all they'll do is call our 100 number and say, we'll go back to the basic service rate and we'll be put back on the basic service rate. Uh, there's a few of these going on already, the largest one is the Cape Light Compact, which is, uh, most of the communities of Barstool County are doing this. Uh, the City of Allborough has done it and some smaller towns, uh, mostly in central Massachusetts have done it. You know, on page six, we think this is a good way to get choice to smaller customers. By pooling the load, uh, we're able to, we think you'll be able to get a good price and from our perspective, it's a good market for our generation, we're looking for markets to sell our generation. And we think there can be savings in customer acquisition costs that could pass on to the customer. Uh, another important part is still one bill from the utility. Still get a bill from National Grid, uh, will be the distribution part of the bill, won't change, National Grid will still be the one to control the poles and wires, but the energy portion of the bill will just have our name on, on that part of the bill. On page seven, what, what happens now is if you don't have a third-party electric supplier, National Grid goes out and buys electricity every six months by law. And that's, they can only go six months at a time. And you can see it's a pretty volatile, uh, market. Uh, in 2008, prices were very high, uh, fortunately, and very low right now. Uh, but the energy markets are impacted by what's going on in the world and that can change at a time. Uh, that's another reason why we think it's a good time to enter into this transaction, to take advantage of low energy prices. On page eight, and I think I'll wrap up there if you have questions, I'll get into the rest of it on page eight. Uh, another part of this program is the smaller towns that have done this have hired a consultant and the consultant comes in and sets everything up for the town and then the consultant gets paid a portion of everybody's electric bill. And what we're, what we want to do is, uh, as an electric supplier, is kind of cut that consultant out and that savings can be used, uh, by the city to fund other programs. Uh, so we got some ideas we have, we have a good neighbor fund, discount for seniors, economic development, you know, renewable energy. Uh, maybe we can put solar in, uh, different places in some of the schools or it would cover other municipal expenses. And we're, we're also willing to, you know, customize green programs if people want to purchase just green electricity. I think I'll wrap up there, uh, kind of just from a process perspective. Uh, what we, what we'd like to see happen is we've, we've spoken with the mayor, uh, the mayor was interested in this. She, uh, suggested we talk to Jim Candel, an Economic Development Director and Councilor Cahill, because Council Cahill has an energy institute in its background. Uh, so we've done that, we've talked to the, uh, the Housing Committee of the Lynn City Council and, uh, now we're here before the entire city council. What we'd like to do is, uh, negotiate an implementation agreement with, uh, the mayor and, uh, from there, uh, we would come up with a plan and the plan we would present to the Department of Public Utilities and once they approve the plan, we could implement our program. That's kind of a quick, uh, as, as brief as possible for a fairly complicated subject. And I think I have to take any questions.
Councilor Cahill?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, to you, to the members, I want to thank members of the, uh, like the legal, the public, well, the housing community who had, uh, some wonderful questions last time NextEra was here regarding the program. And I'd like to thank Councilors, uh, Hong and Creighton for their own work on this and also, um, Jim Goodout from the EDIC has been working with NextEra as well to try to bring these benefits to some of the EDIC properties. And, uh, I'd like to thank the council listening, I'm not going to be any questions, but I would like to, um, at this point, if I may, make a motion to allow the city, to allow the mayor to enter into negotiations with NextEra to provide for municipal aggregation. What's our primary motion?
Uh, well, why don't we take questions first and then we'll come back to Council Cahill. Uh, Council Asier?
Thank you. I haven't really had a chance to look through this whole thing, but I'm seeing he's just showing a National Grid's basic service rates.
Yes.
What is your basic service rate?
Uh, we, we actually only, um, National, only the utilities can have a basic service rate.
So when you charge, I told you, uh, so.
We actually provide some of the powers for basic service rates throughout New England. So we, we provide that power, those are only six months at a time. Uh, we're in, just, just like, uh, you know, when people, uh, look at, um, you know, having their 401K plant, you have some things in short-term, uh, investments, some in midterm investments and some longer-term investments. Uh, we look at this basic service as a short-term investment and prices could go in our favor if the supplier, they're up, that's a good thing for us. But we also want to do some longer-term transactions and, uh, as part of this transaction, you know, we would show you exactly how we come up with the pricing, show you how, uh, markets work and, uh, you'd be able to compare that in a very transparent manner to what's going on. And, and by law, uh, we have to beat the basic service rate, at least in the beginning of the program.
By almost, you have to beat by.
We just have to beat it, yeah.
It could be a half a percent or.
It could be, it could be very small amounts, the prices are low right now. You know, so I think if we beat it, that's a good thing for the city. You know, the bad thing about basic services, prices could spike back up very rapidly. You know, the bad thing about basic services, prices could spike back up very rapidly. But now I think is the time to kind of put basic service to the side and enter into probably a two- to three-year deal, try to take advantage of these low prices.
So you're looking for us to go to lock in a price?
Yes, yeah. Because that's, it's a good time to lock into a price, get a stable price. If you remember back in 2008, using the oil example, people's oil bills shot through the roof, and some people had actually locked in a rate at that time. Others hadn't. People's oil bills were very high. So what we're saying is, let's avoid that, lock in the rate, and then if prices even go lower, you can opt out, and then go back to the basic service rate. So it's not kind of win-win. We thank for the consumers of Lynn.
Councilor Lozey.
If Lynn decides to enter into an agreement with NextEra, will NextEra do the maintenance and the repairment, or will National Grid keep those responsibilities?
Yeah, National Grid would keep those responsibilities. We're just talking about the electricity that goes through the wires. That would be electricity coming from NextEra. National Grid would still own and operate and maintain all the wires, just like before.
Thank you.
Councilor Depp.
Based on your, like, experience in Florida, how much would you say the average household saved by switching?
Yeah, it's tough to say the exact number, because the market is volatile. The prices in the electric market change, actually, every five minutes. But we, there will be a savings, or we won't do the deal, or you shouldn't do it.
Councilor Seer.
I don't have a say in going into negotiations, to be honest with you. It's a regulatory, or the taxpayers are, if they've decided to buy from National Grid, how can we be able to negotiate? Buy, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I may, as a citizen, already negotiated the price with another company other than National Grid.
Right.
And I'm like, now you're asking us to give you permission to sit down with the mayor so she can renegotiate?
No, no, not, it's a good question, Councilor. If you've already entered into an agreement with another supplier, those agreements will not be part of this program until those agreements end. Then if you want to, you can join this. If not, you can renegotiate with the other supplier, or stay on the default rate. You know, that's called the default rate for a reason. The state makes National Grid provide that power. And the reason why the state limited them to six months is because they wanted to create a more vibrant market, to have other third-party electric suppliers enter the market. And really, what municipal aggregation does, it allows that to happen. And it's really just a first step. We could try this for a few years. If it doesn't work, you know, you go on to another supplier or another program. But at least it educates the city, and it educates the citizens that there are alternatives out there. And because we're aggregating the entire city, we think we'll get a very good price versus having to spend wanting to go door-to-door to get customers. We'll cut that cost out.
You have the floor, Councilor.
The other thing, I can understand that we sell electricity low, that you're saying there's a savings there. But I think the savings that's going to come back on a regular rate pay is minimal, to be honest, when you're talking pennies. If you're only, you know, you're talking 13 cents to show and have it for a kilowatt. And by law, all you have to do is come in at that 13 cents. So if you're saving nine cents of a penny, you know, you see what I'm saying? The rate pay, whether it be the city or the individual homeowner, is going to save, the young ones who make money is your company. It's the way I'm looking at it. So tell me I'm wrong, or tell me I'm right.
Well, we're in the business to make money. I'm not going to deny that. But, you know, we're selling, right now, we're selling to utilities that provide basic service. So we're making money on that as well. And it's more for us, if it's a market diversification opportunity. It gives us a chance to enter into a new market, to get new customers that are a little bit longer than six months. And we sell our electricity very, very competitively. We just entered into a long-term deal up in the state of Vermont last year with the Vermont utilities, that it's still a fully regulated market up there. But I think the Vermont utilities are very happy with it. So, you know, it's a, it's a real market, and it's a market we're going to be in for a long time. We have assets up here, and we have investment in this market. So it's not just above the margin. To us, it's really about being a significant player in a market. And really, I think for the citizens of Lynn, a good opportunity to try something new. And, you know, we could do this with other cities and towns. We're trying to do with Lynn and Swansky first.
Well, if we enter the city of Vermont, what's the average rate they're saving on their electric bill? Do you have that information?
Yeah, I, do you want to answer that? It could be, if it's a small, it could be $20 to $30 a price to spike. It could be significant.
That's actually what happened in Vermont. You know, we're in a period right now where natural gas prices, which are typically in the way because our fuel source for the generation of electricity is becoming natural gas. We're at a 10th of a nationwide. And when we entered into the transaction in Vermont, and we're bound by a financial agreement for that particular commercial transaction, prices after that went up. And that deal, to our company and to the outside business, was really good. But we go off and negotiate those transactions. And that particular transaction is against our, with our own asset, with a nuclear facility. So, you know, the benefit to the town of Lynn, without any risk, sorry, the city of Lynn, and the particular consumers within Lynn is, you get to take advantage of that long-term service without any corresponding risk on their side. So, for instance, right now, gas prices are at a 10-year low. And if we were to lock in that price, I think it's unlikely that those prices go lower, or at least significantly lower. But if they were to do that, those customers have the ability to then either switch back to the default service, which they probably wouldn't do, because then you're going through that, that period of uncertainty that's only within those six-month periods. Or they could just go to, if somebody else came in and had a lower competitive rate, they could go to them at that time.
Councilor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. And I can just clarify this, and Councilor Seer, I think you're asking on-point questions. Basically, the question is, is this. Right now, most people have no idea that they can contract another company to supply their electricity. I had no idea, which most people here have no idea. Well, you have a basic rate. So what their basic rate is, is basically whatever National Grid wants to give us. Now, National Grid don't care less if they supply us their energy. They just don't care. They're forced by Department of Public Utilities to give us these bills every month because there's no suppliers out there that we're contracting. In fact, they don't, they don't want to do it anymore. They're in the business of just basically providing the service.
Yeah, that's true. National Grid is out of the generation business.
They're out, de-cop, gone. So what this, what this basically does is, uses all the rate payers that we have, puts them in a bucket, and then we tell NextEra, hey, we want to put rate for this bucket, a lot of customers, you don't have to do a lot of work for it, but we want a better rate. By law, you have to give us a better rate than what people are getting right now in the basic rate. And they're going to get that for two or three years, depending on how long we contract up, and that's going to be flat. Now, the beautiful thing is, if energy prices on base rate goes below NextEra, buy NextEra, I'm calling out, I'm getting out of the revenue train, because I'm going to move back to basic rate, probably, because I'm going to save some money. But they don't own those customers. So something tells me Bob's going to come back here and say, "National Grid's beaten us a little bit on the basic rate." "We're going to have to renegotiate, maybe we can do even better rate." What this does is stabilize energy for our homeowners, for people who rent, and for small businesses. So if I'm going to do a business plan for three or five, five years now, I have one less thing to worry about flushly. My energy's going to be the same. If I'm renting, or if I own a triple-dot, I'm going to raise rents on people if the energy market goes out of control, and I have to make up those costs over my rentals. So what we see here is an opportunity. It's a pilot program, so not a lot of communities are doing it. I can tell you that other companies that provide these services are not doing large-scale residential. A missco, they do like the door-to-door, the direct energies. Or maybe the company that gave you four is just, they want to like knock on your door and basically harass you, and it's a terrible, terrible agreement. This agreement's going to be reached by the mayor. They're going to provide attorney services for us, so we can hire our own attorneys, so these solicitors are reviewed, then it's supposed to be Department of Energy Resources to review, then this contract with Department of Public Utilities to review, before we even get to that. So there'll be plenty of options to handle this. There'll be plenty of options to either take advantage of it, or cut off negotiations. And I think it's just one more creative way that maybe Lynn, in working with Swansky, can save some money for their residents. And at the end of the day, if prices go upside down for us, people can just opt out of the program. And your bills will come from National Grid. You won't see any disruption here, so you'll still see National Grid bill. So that's what I'm saying.
Councilor Biden.
I feel that, before I could go over something like this, I have to be more educated on it. I mean, just one day, and I haven't had time to digest this, and, you know, I'd like to know more about it. So at this time, I don't feel comfortable voting yes for this.
Councilor Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. I just had a question for you, to Mr. Kalsman, now, do we, like, what we have right now with National Grid, do we have a contract with them, like, six months off, and they change the price every month?
They're going to change it every six months, actually. Yeah, they're going to change every six months.
Okay, so you're going to give us, what, a two-year, three-year?
Yeah, that's what we'd like to do. We'd like to do a two-to-three-year transaction.
And then I heard Councilor Cahill say, now, say, like, we lock in with you in six months, we sign a two-year deal, and say, like, a year, like you said, you have a rate, the rates were lower than National Grid, or that are providing all the electricity, is that you're going to come down? You know, are you going to actually come back and renegotiate that contract back, or are you going to hold us to the fire and keep the rate up?
Oh, we can't hold your feet to the fire, because you can opt out. The people can opt out if they want to. As a practical matter, I think we would come back.
I'm just saying, yes, we would probably come back.
We would come back, and if you try to keep, keep everybody happy, yes. We'd put a lot of time and effort into this. We'd want people to be opting out, as a practical matter.
Councilor Seer.
I just want to say that I can appreciate the time that Councilor Cahill and Craig have put into this. I kind of feel the same way as Councilor Lozey, that I'd just like to look at this a little bit more. Not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. You know, he answered most of my questions, but I still would like to look at this just a little bit more. I just don't feel comfortable in favor of it at this point.
And Councilor Ford.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the maintenance part. I lean on some people from National Grid, like the Tennessee lineup on the market, and to that street, and I have like connections about, so when you try to fix my streets, I'm feeling a fair amount of help. I will reach out to, I'll still reach out to them if you guys would be able to try and, uh, second.
So for National Grid, like I said before, when deregulation occurred, National Grid decided to sell off its electric generation plants. So National Grid makes its money by the amount of electricity that flows through its wires. They're still going to make a sale amount of money, because electricity's still going to be flowing through their wires. It actually saves them some administrative cost, having to lock the market every six months and buy this energy for the default, for the default rate. So National Grid will not be impacted one way or the other.
How old that maintenance is, I don't think we know.
There's nothing, it's still their wires. They're still responsible for the maintenance of the wires. It's just our, it's just our energy going through the wires, and not...
About grind, underground, solar, it's totally...
That's right.
Councilor Lozey.
Mr. President, I had the benefit of attending the Housing Committee hearing meeting, where NextEra presented their pilot proposal. And I was somewhat skeptical, I have to be honest. And I understand my fellow colleagues, if you're uncertain, but what is certain is that the opt-out. I want to emphasize that if prices were to go south, and we've heard this numerous times, if prices change, you have that option where any resident can switch back to National Grid. So I don't see it as a lose at all here. There's no catch to it, there's only plus-plus. If you're, if you're a diligent homeowner, you watch your finances, you watch your bills, obviously, if NextEra can guarantee a kilowatt hour that is one or two cents cheaper than what National Grid may currently be offering, well, that to me is, people don't like this term, a no-brainer. And if it goes up, or National Grid goes down, and NextEra refuses to renegotiate to lower their price, well, as a homeowner, I can just simply, I'm going back to National Grid. So the, the whole concept here is, NextEra obviously is out to make money. They're going to make money, and I wish them a lot of success. Because what they're doing is, they're offering something that is attractive to those, for instance, Swansky and Lynn combining. It's like the buying power, whether it's electricity, or you want to combine your buying power, buy vehicles, or, or like Lynn Water and Soil will buy chemicals in a consortium, that if you have multiple people paying for it, the wholesaler has to charge less. And that's what NextEra is doing with the city of Lynn. We enter into that, I don't think we can be hurt. Nobody's going to be hurt by it. The worst that can happen is that somebody has to fill out some paperwork to change back over to National Grid for their distribution, or a phone call. Yeah, just a phone call. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Pan.
Yes, I've had the benefit of meeting NextEra with Councilor Cahill and Matt. I feel more comfortable. I can understand how it's on the council, the first time they see it. I don't feel as comfortable. I'm convinced, I have a lot of concerns about maintenance, and, you know, I'm convinced now from what I know, that National Grid will still provide the same limited service they've always provided. And I like the attraction of the rate guarantee for a few years, and you can't lock down on it. But the question I had though was a procedural question. If we granted the mayor the right to negotiate an agreement, would it then come back to the city council again? Because I know that's, sometimes that does, sometimes it doesn't. And I just wanted to clear that up.
And a number of things, such as a talk of procedure, which I'm sure some of people on the floor saw the brief conference we had with the Assistant City Solicitor, and Councilor Cahill, and Councilor Calucci up here. This came up on the new business. And because of the motion that's going to be made, it actually is something that technically should have been on the agenda for the public to see. So the city solicitor's recommendation would be to put this on the agenda two weeks from now. And I think a proper form of the motion from Councilor Cahill would be to put this on the agenda, to make a recommendation to the mayor so that it's advertised in public, in public meetings. And I think that was Councilor Cahill's original intent. Somehow, things were lost in translation, wasn't put on the agenda that way. So that may address some of the concerns that the other councils have, to give them time to address those issues. To answer your second point, once that's properly done, is a question specifically that I asked of the city solicitor, we could in fact make a motion allowing the mayor to enter into negotiations, and once they come to an agreement, to put a condition on that that's subject to city council approval. So if the council so desires, we could have that come back in front of us for final approval once the procedural impediments are taken out of the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President.
Councilor Calucci.
National Grid, the gas and the electricity in the state matches already in our state. Is that true?
The transmission of gas electricity is regulated by the state. Not the actual gas, not, or the electricity itself.
So I heard, as we talked about, National Grid gas, and you told me you wanted to raise the price and space that, and wait. I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, I'm not getting into that a little bit. What happens is, they wouldn't let them, they did go, they have to go for rate pay. What happens is, they wouldn't let them, they did go, they have to go for rate cases periodically, and they have to disclose what their costs are. And based upon those costs, the commission determines whether they will prove it or they will occur. And they set their rates according to how they've incurred their costs.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure that the rate they're talking about is the actual transmission rate. The cost of gas and the cost of electricity is a pass-through. Okay? It's just whatever National Grid pays for it.
Councilor Seer.
Thank you. I do have a lot of questions. So do you have a say in that, Councilor Cahill, would you like to table this?
No, I don't, I don't think a table would be the appropriate motion, because I want, I believe...
Set it down for a public hearing?
No, we don't have to set it down for a public hearing. I think the motion would be, technically, just to make sure that it's properly advertised and put on the agenda for the next council meeting, so the motion can be in any manner. What I've heard tonight is, I haven't heard anybody say that they're opposed to this on its merit. Everything that I've heard is that this is something that's worthwhile to pursue and look into. It seems like it has merit. So I think that, and it obviously is Councilor Cahill's motion, that a proper motion would be to put this on the agenda for the next council meeting to make a recommendation to the mayor, one way or another. That way, if Councilor Cahill or any other council wants to meet either publicly or privately with the people from Nexxer, they can do so in the next two weeks. We can have a committee meeting, a committee of the whole in between to answer any questions that anybody may have. But that's up to the councils on what they want to do. Okay? Councilor Ford.
I'll put that on the motions.
We'll let Councilor Cahill make that motion. Okay, we'll take that in the recommendation to put it on the agenda for the next council meeting to make a recommendation, one way or another, to the mayor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Nat. I'm sorry that I haven't recognized you yet.
I always like changing something, asking changes. I think it's worth while you try, so I'm, I'm a bit shy for it.
Any other comments? I'm going to take one more liberty from the chair if I may. You mentioned the practical matter of certain things. And one of the questions that I'm hoping that you can ponder over the next couple of weeks, the practical matter and the reality is, my guess is, that the consumer and the homeowner is not going to be comparing megawatt rates and kilowatt rates when they get their electric bill. And would you be willing, if we get to the point where they're into negotiations with the mayor, comes back in front of the council, to have some type of clause in there that if other rates for other third-party energy suppliers goes down, that you automatically reduce your rates so that we don't have to opt out? You don't have to come back in front of us. That's an automatic scale, you automatically are the lowest bid up there. Was that something that you would consider?
We would consider that. You know, but the counter to that would be, and people are focused on, you know, beating the National Grid rate at the time it was very low, which we have to do by law. But, you know, my laws would say back to me, would they be willing to renegotiate if prices skyrocket?
And maybe this is a conversation from the day with Nat Wolford.
Councilor Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nat.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Any other new visits? Councilor Sears?
I just want to thank Councilor Cahill for a lot of meaningful words.
I'd like to thank Councilor Seer, who took more time with the floor today than I should. Before we get, thank you very much, gentlemen. Before we get to the student council orders, I'd like to recognize a motion to suspend the rules from Councilor Seer to allow Command Sergeant Major George Keith Waters to speak. Councilor Seer?
Let me suspend the rules so that the Command Sergeant could come up.
So I hear a second. Paul Phelan. George Keith Waters is a Command Sergeant Major, recently retired from the U.S. military, spent thirty years' worth of service, and he was at Camp Shelby, he's from Mississippi. And he's actually not from Lynn, but he's visiting a lot of friends that he has in Lynn. And I got a phone call from that friend who said that he was visiting in Lynn, and he's also a high school principal. And we thought it was a good idea because he wanted to come and see City Hall and check out the inner workings of the city. Because it was Student Government Day, he has educational experience, that he may speak to you for a couple of minutes on Yon Night, Student Government Night. So with that, Sergeant Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, this is a great pleasure, because I know what kind of students I'm dealing with and talking about here. Y'all are a part of the crop, I'm from this city, and I'm, y'all are a part of it. I would like to thank you, Councilmen and ladies and gentlemen, for having this leadership project. It's good for students. I was in education before, for thirty-two years, before I got the opportunity to go to Iraq. And I miss it. I ain't going back yet, but I ought to. But again, thank you for what you do. Thank the council members for having this project. And y'all are going to be sitting in one of these chairs shortly. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please, Sergeant Keighley. City Council President has a presentation for you from the city council. Thank you.